And then tonight, the first item on the agenda is the Howard County Public School System Capital Budget for 2024. We'll begin with the HCPSS presentation.
Good evening. My name is Dan, Dan Louvly, Director of Capital Planning and Construction for the Howard County Public School System. I apologize for being virtual this evening as I'm feeling a little bit under the weather. Before you this evening is the Board of Education's proposed FY 2024 Capital Budget, FY 2025 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program, FY 24 through 29 Long Range Systemic Renovation Projects, and the FY 24 through 2033 Long Range Master Plan. These items are before you this evening for the purpose of submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction. The budget before you is an initial step in the process and is the Board of Education's proposed budget. The process will have the budget reviewed once again in February, where the Board will approve the Board's requested budget for submission to the county for inclusion into the overall county capital budget. The Superintendent presented his budget to the Board on September 8th, and the Board amended and approved the proposed budget and state priority list on September 29th. The Board's amendments were based on a reorganization of the projects to represent the Board of Education's priority order. A comparison document was provided and uploaded to the Planning Board's website with a comparison chart showing the differences between the Superintendent's and Board's proposed budgets. The Board proposed budget for FY 2024 totaled $67.7 million, while the extended FY 25 through 29 CIP request is $477.8 million. The FY 24 through 29 Long Range Systemic Renovation Projects totaled $1.82 million, with the FY 24 through 33 Long Range Master Plan totaling $1.172 billion, and that is billion with a B. The FY 24 Capital Budget continues the construction funding for High School 13 and continues the Oakland Mills Middle School and Dunlogdon Middle School renovation and addition projects from the FY 23 budget. In addition to the major capital projects, our ongoing projects like relocatable classrooms, barrier-free planning and design, and maintenance and systemic projects. The FY 25 through 29 Capital Improvement Program includes budget requests that support continued planning and construction for Oakland Mills Middle School and Dunlogdon Middle School renovation additions scheduled for occupancy in 2027, planning and construction for Oakland Mills High School renovation in addition scheduled for final occupancy in 2029, planning and construction for new elementary school number 43 scheduled to open in 2030, with the location adjusted this year from the southeast to the Turf Valley site. Also included are planning for Centennial High School renovation addition scheduled to be completed in 2032, planning of the Faulkner Ridge Center renovation scheduled to be completed in 2031, ongoing projects such as relocatable classrooms, site acquisition technology, roofing projects, school parking lot planning and design of area free, as well as multiple systemic renovations and modernizations that include projects for HVAC, elevator modernization projects, security vesting projects, and emergency reserve funding. Further detail are on page three of the budget. The Long Range Master Plan includes funding for the previously mentioned projects, as well as Thomas Viaduct Middle School addition, added new this year by the Board of Education, Tapsco Middle School renovation in addition, Murray Hill Middle School renovation in addition, a regional early childhood center, new elementary school 44 now projected for the southeast area, applications and research lab renovation, Jeffers Hill Elementary School renovation, and new high school number 14 projected to be placed at Troy Park. Thank you for your time and allowing me to put forth the Board of Education's proposed FY 2024 Capital Budget.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Kevin?
Hello, Mr. Louvly. Good to see you again. Just wanted to find out a little bit more about Faulkner Ridge and how that is sort of moving away from the September 26 date that we had on here originally.
Certainly good to see you again, sir, as well. So the Faulkner Ridge Center, as we discussed last year in detail, is an existing facility that the school system has, and it was proposed in the Superintendent's budget to be renovated earlier, specifically for the pre-K needs that we're anticipating for current needs as well as the blueprint needs. And the Board of Education laid out their priority list with all projects considered and took into account where we currently stand with pre-K. And currently, not just Howard County Public School System, but the entire state is still evaluating the pre-K needs, both existing up to 185% of the federal poverty line and the extension identified in the blueprint for Maryland's future from 185 to 300. So while we are still investigating the exact needs and being able to identify the demonstrated need, that's one of the reasons that the Faulkner Ridge Center was shifted down in that priority order.
Okay. A follow-up question on that was, this, I'm not understanding why the school system would allow a boarded-up facility to remain in a community surrounded by houses. Individuals go and come from that neighborhood on a regular basis, and they're looking at a boarded-up building and all of the other projects, it sounds like, that are being funded. I don't believe at this point in time they're regarding boarded-up buildings in a neighborhood. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Yes, the, the projects that are above it, other than the new projects, which don't have an existing facility, but the other projects are occupied. Faulkner Ridge Center is the, the one facility on this that is not currently occupied.
Okay. I just wanted to read something real quick. The project purpose for this particular center, Faulkner Ridge, it says the center will renovate the existing facility to utilize an existing HCPSS asset. The project calls for a renovation of the existing building in accordance with recommendations from the feasibility study for a regional early childhood center. The project is in response to full-day pre-kindergarten services identified within the blueprint for Maryland's future. Renovation will include new electrical, mechanical, plumbing, technology, roofing, and line safety systems as applicable per the scope of work. Interior spaces will be reconfigured, new finishes provided, accessibility improved, and new spaces added as required, bringing the facility into compliance with the HCPSS Guidance Manual for renovations and modernizations of existing schools and modern codes. The complete scope of this project will be defined by the Board of Education. The approved construction documents see the brochure and the policy 6020 and the supporting data section for a complete description of the process and any change orders approved subsequent to submittal of the CD brochure. The project details basically say Faulkner Ridge opened in 1969. This project is intended to provide for regional early childhood programs based on blueprint for Maryland's future. The location meets the needs based on concentration of population in this walkable community in Western Columbia. This opportunity is an ideal use of existing resources as the HCPSS already owns the land and the building, and the building can be upgraded to meet the needs. The project timeline was 12 months. Contract bidding and award could be done as early as July 2024. Construction 20 months, online 2025, close it out 2026. The main concern that I had right now was that currently residents are having a considerable concern about teenagers are opening up the windows and getting inside behind the boards, and there's lots of glass and nails and, you know, things on the walls that kids are going to get hurt. And that's the concern with the residents. And so for the county or the school system to just look the other way and push other projects forward when this one is lined up, it moved from fourth place to seventh place, and then on the statewide, it looks like it's been dropped entirely for the board process. So again, just wanted to find out what can the community do in this case to take this to another level? Mr. Louvly?
Certainly. Thank you for the question. I would definitely take your concerns regarding the safety back to the rest of the school system to see what can be done in the meantime. It is still the school system's intent to renovate the facility to be a pre-K or pre-kindergarten need to address current and blueprint needs. There, there has been discussion regarding this project and the way that it could be funded. As it sits right now in the Board of Education-approved, proposed budget, it is being looked at as a standard funding source. There is the pass-through grant that was allocated to several different counties, and Howard County specifically received $35 million this year, and it has certain stipulations to it. There has been indication from the county executive to use some of that funding towards the renovation of Faulkner Ridge Center. There are some still lingering questions that need clarity with regards to this legislation, which the Board of Education has reached out to the county to look for that clarification. So as soon as we're able to clarify these items with the school system and the county, it is possible that the Faulkner Ridge Center may adjust in its timing. I can't confirm a date until some of those clarifications are made, though.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate the feedback and the discussion. Thank you very much. That's all I had, sir.
Thank you. James?
Good evening, Dan. How are you? Besides feeling under the weather, sorry to hear that, and I hope I don't add to it too much. You know, one of the things that kind of stood out, and I think it's kind of a symptom of the overall flaws in, in the capital budget process, you know, there was what, you know, was approved in May, and then what was proposed by the Superintendent in August, September, with a lot of careful work, and then quickly, you know, the Board in a couple hours makes their adjustments and their decisions. And so one of the things that stood out to me was that the proposed budget from the Board ends up roughly $9 million less for FY 24. Is that roughly correct?
Roughly, it is, yes. It, it is less. I'd have to look exactly what the total amount is. But yes, it's currently projected to be less than the Superintendent's. As I noted, this is one of the first steps. There are still opportunities before the FY 24 Capital Budget is finalized in next May to make some slight other adjustments. So that number may change, but as of it sits right now, yes, it's at 67, where I believe the Superintendent's proposed was at 76.
Sure. And, you know, I guess ultimately, you know, my response is, as my colleague was speaking, you know, everybody, depending where they come from in the county and their experience, they're going to see different projects that they wish were higher, different projects that they may wish to see somewhere else. You know, for being a resident of Elkridge, I look at, you know, High School 14. You know, my third and sixth grader will never see it at this point. And I don't know where they will end up at school. It changes every two years. It'll probably change again in a little bit, and they'll probably end up in multiple relocatable classrooms at whatever high school that they end up at. And I, I don't see a way out of that, as you mentioned, what the budget is. You know, it's still, I'm curious of, what's the, what are we looking at outside of kind of repeating this process every year? I mentioned to the Board that, per the state, the cost of construction has gone up roughly 90% in the last 10 years. So when you go out to the end of this 10 years from now, with inflation even higher now than when these numbers were run by the state. So basically, we could look at some of these 2030, 2031 numbers and probably double them. Really concerned of, of how we're going to get there. And what do you see as the way to, to realize some of this 10 years from now?
So that, that's a very complex question to answer. I know you and I have had some, some other conversations along with Councilmember Youngman, specifically about P3. We have had further conversations with the state. We are closely watching PG County, and I believe Charles County is investigating that as well. That is potentially one avenue to go forward to address other schools sooner. There are a lot of technicalities and considerations that go along with P3 as well. While it does potentially provide projects sooner, it does then ultimately act as a mortgage. It's not free. It is something that the county and the school system would have to pay back over a long term. And as I'm sure everybody has heard through conversations with the county council and the Board of Education, one of our concerns is, or one of everybody's concerns, is the continuity of funding and the availability of funding. And if we add on a mortgage payment to that, even in the out years, that just expounds that, that complexity. So there are several different ways advocating for our delegates and senators in the State Assembly for new legislation similar to either the Built to Learn Act or this pass-through grant. Those are other ways that we can look for additional funding sources. We are also constantly reviewing grants and other funding sources that are potentially coming from the federal government as well to see where we can bolster the, the sources of funding for each of our projects. Hopefully, that answers your question, sir.
It does. Thank you. Do you know offhand, are, are projections for like 2031, are those based off of like 2023, 2024 estimates? Or have we calculated out what inflation might look like? So like for...
No, it's, it's, so the Long Range Master Plan is based off of what we currently see as the, the construction costs. In the past, we have looked at escalation costs, either 1.5 or 3%. As we've seen in recent, with pandemic, the industry is now seeing closer to a 7 or higher percent. So for us to project out is difficult, and it also comes with a lot of potential errors in that costing. It's uncertain if the current industry will stay as it is, if it will create this as a new base point within escalation rising from there, or if there will be a settling and go back down. So as it sits right now, all the numbers that you see within the Long Range Master Plan are based off of the current state dollars per square foot, which are $385 a square foot for renovation and $458 a square foot for new construction.
Okay. And last one is, as I look, you know, there's obviously benefits of what comes off, you know, out of future capital budgets. If some of these renovations and replacements are moved up, that can take expenses out of budgets down the years. And I was just curious, do you, do you all have something that is relatively dynamic? Like if you calculate, you know, some of these changes, how quickly can you map out, like a return on investment and, and kind of what we save? So, you know, if we save $5 million in, you know, future renovation or just kind of maintaining broken systems, how long does it take to turn that around? Or do you need more resources to really dig into this data effectively?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's, it's more resources, but it is beyond just my office. In setting up the capital budget, we do work with a multitude of offices at the office or the Howard County Public School System. And a lot of what you're talking about is, as we do a capital project, it, it may relieve some of the standard maintenance because you have, you now have new systems, and it may also address some of the deferred maintenance lists, which, right now, I believe we have approximately $650 million of deferred maintenance and deferred projects. I do want to be clear about that, is a large portion of that number is deferred projects, not just deferred maintenance. And one of the complexities that come into your question is taking the top project there, for instance, Oakland Mills Middle School. Once that is finished, anything that is on its deferred maintenance list will come off that list. That deferred maintenance list, though, eventually those items will be replaced with something else. So while you, we will see some savings and see some benefits to that, it's not the end of all of our maintenance and needs for all of our facilities.
Sure. No, I understand. I just, you know, especially on the year-to-year side, you know, how to maximize every dollar that we have, knowing that we could spend each dollar five times if we had it. And I, I know it's extremely hard. I know you have one of the hardest jobs in the school system, let alone maybe even also the county. And so as much as there are things that, that are challenging for me, I also extremely appreciative of your work, of the staff in your office. I know this time of year during public hearings, you all get a lot of, a lot. And so just know, everything you do is appreciated, and I understand the challenges that go into it. You know, I try to challenge in a way that hopefully ends up being supportive, even if it takes me a while to get there. And so we do want to help, but I appreciate you as always.
Thank you. I'll make sure the staff is aware.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, well, a lot of the things that James just kind of went over, you know, I'm, I'm actually sitting here because I was going to say that the adjustments that were made last week very much benefited Oakland Mills, where I live. I do not have children in the school any longer. But I know many, many parents have worked very, very hard to start to see the renovation and replacement of Oakland Mills High School and the middle school. There are some of the oldest schools in the county, going back to the beginnings, the dim beginnings of Columbia. But going forward, just watching this, it's, it's a little unnerving because at one hand, there's sort of this musical chairs, you know, one, one, one school and one project moves up, another one moves down. So some people would say, score, we got the school, but, you know, you're going to have to wait for another decade. I think that, I think that's a shame, and I, I think as we celebrate the growth of Howard County, and I've been on this board now almost 10 years, and what I'm looking at is the infrastructure of Howard County. And I'm thinking, well, every time we add all these new housing units and new development, there's more roads, more schools, and yet at the same time, as we progress from a rural, small-population county into the county we are today, all of the things we build will be where Faulkner Ridge is at some point in the future. And to me, it's, it doesn't seem like, it doesn't, it really doesn't seem like going forward that that, that's, it's going, it's going to work. It's not, what are they, they're saying, it's not sustainable. At some, I happen to grow up partially in the city, but also in the suburbs of Philadelphia, which grew exponentially. And for 20 years or so, everything went great. There was plenty of money for everything, and then it started to turn around the other way, and all, all the bills came due. So, you know, it's like, you lost one, you lost one, I won one. But it, but I don't think any of us win with this system. And I, I really congratulate, you know, you guys trying to, to balance this budget and be fair to everyone, and there is absolutely no way to be fair with everyone. There simply is not enough to go around. So I do congratulate you for that. But I am cautious about the future because I keep thinking, this is just the beginning. What happens when High School 14 gets old? Then we'll have all of these schools to worry about. Anyway, that, that's just my thoughts on it. I, I do think you've done an exemplary job and also bouncing back from the changes from the meeting last week. I'm, I'm very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara?
No. The, um, thank you for your work. When I was going through the large book, one of, one of the things I was trying to, to look for was a chart that showed when a school was last renovated and possibly had, you know, the date when it was built, but ordered by the, the last renovation date, that would kind of show how, how we're matching up priorities with, with the age of facilities. And that, that entire chart seemed to be missing. In, in this day and age, do you, do you think you could make an effort to actually publish electronic data sets of, of the information that you use to build these charts? That way, I could go through and, and pull out the numbers that I wanted to look at, and it would make it a lot easier for, for everybody to be able to analyze this and, and slice it and dice it for whatever they're looking at. Have, have you given that any consideration?
We have not specifically looked at publicizing electronic data, if that's what you're, you're specifically asking about. We can absolutely think about that and take that into consideration. I do want to draw your attention in the capital budget book to two charts, specifically starting on page 64 and 65. We do have our list of schools. They're not, they're not ranked, as you noted, by the latest renovation at the top and down, but we do have our list of schools when they were originally built and then years of renovation. And then I guess more importantly, similar to what you were saying, is on page 69 of supporting data is another chart that goes through, starting in 1980, and goes through the different years, and it'll identify each of the different schools of when they had assistance from the, the state for construction. And then we have a continuation of the chart on page 70.
Right. And, and those were the charts I was looking at. I, I was wishing I could hit the top of the, the, the sort bar and put it in, into a different order so that I could pull out what I was looking for.
Understood, and we can definitely talk with our IT department about potentially putting something up on the, the website so that it's, it's accessible and can be sorted, as you're noting.
And, and then the other issue is, 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 do you have money allocated for part, school parking lot expansions? When you do that, do you, are you going to consider renovations that would increase stormwater management even for the existing parking lots? Because a lot of times, it's like, well, it's a small addition, so we don't have to comply, or we don't have to change the other parking lot that was built in 1969 to 1969 regulations, where if, when you were doing that design and, and you used modern-day construction standards, there, there would be a lot of improvement for streamwater quality around. Are you budgeting for that in, in this amount?
The, the primary amount that is within the school parking lot expansions, the, the, the name of that project, the E1012, is park, school parking lot expansions. My understanding from our grounds department is a majority of that funding is used on maintaining and upgrading existing facilities. There is some expansion of the actual parking lots, and they do definitely, at least the expansion portion, design them per modern codes. I don't know. I'd have to check with our grounds department to see if they go back and they bring up the older portions of the parking lot to bring them up to the newer codes. I do not know that information off the top of my head.
The, um, but that renovation would provide an opportunity for something to look at.
It would, and I will say, as we do a full renovation outside of that project line, but when we do a full renovation, say at Oakland Mills Middle School or Dunlop Middle School, we do look at that as part of the, the larger project scopes.
Okay, tho- those were my two comments. Does anybody else have seconds? Is there anybody signed up to testify?
Yes, I have Mr. Drew Roth. You can have a seat right there, sir. Thank you. If you could just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Drew Roth. I live in sixty-one seventeen boysville, Odell, Detroit. The two major problems in high school in Howard County are poorly addressed by the proposed capital budget. For our students, the Oakland Mills High School and the dilapidated facility is increasingly unsafe and unhealthy. The students are vulnerable. Second, high school locations are not aligned with where students live. No priority, there is no high school at all in the health rate, which is merely one-sixth of the county population. Both of these problems can be effectively and efficiently addressed by adding one capital project to the budget. The construction of high school fourteen at the Troy Park site. High school fourteen.
Could you guys hear me? Okay.
Even better now.
All right, sorry. I lost my spot. Okay, both of these problems can be efficiently and effectively addressed by adding one capital project to the budget. The construction of high school fourteen at the Troy Park site. When high school fourteen is ready for occupancy, close Oakland Mills High School and redistribute its enrollment to high school fourteen and the six other existing schools that are nearby. Students will no longer attend the unsafe and outdated Oakland Mills facility. High school fourteen will be populated by students who have no nearby high school now. Transportation times and bus costs will decrease dramatically for the school system as a whole. Access to high schools will be far more equitable for the school system as a whole. This capital budget has proposed both a full renovation and an addition for Oakland Mills High School. The scale of this project is comparable to constructing an entire new school and it should be evaluated as such under policy six thousand. For the next fiscal year, a project should be defined to perform a full, unbiased cost benefit analysis for an Oakland Mills renovation expansion versus the construction of high school fourteen using the site selection criteria in policy six thousand. Given the stagnant system-wide enrollment growth projected for the next decade, only one of these options is feasible and just one of these projects is sufficient. The construction of high school fourteen addresses both the unhealthy environment in Oakland Mills and the misalignment of high school sites with where students live. The trade-off analysis should also consider the benefits of potential alternative uses of the Oakland Mills site if high school fourteen is chosen as the preferred option. Such alternative uses could include a future countywide VOTEC school, which could include a STEM magnet program and con- and continuation as a host school for the Jump Start Program. Another alternative use could be the sale of the site for development of new affordable housing to raise funds for the construction of high school fourteen. Bottom line is the county is considering over a hundred and thirty million dollars on a renovation project equal in scope to a new high school. This money should be spent wisely to provide the maximum benefit to the most people. It is responsible to examine alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's more information in the written stuff with maps and charts that you can, it's better for you to look at that offline than me to try to describe.
Thank you. I read it before it was sent before. It was very nicely done.
Yeah, I mean, seriously, think about it. You, you have, you can solve two problems with one project here.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Nobody online? Lisa? Nope. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to go to work session?
I move that we go into work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in work session. Phil?
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I think watching the progress of this budget over a period of time, it, it's, I won't say the, the best of worst alternatives, but it's almost close to that because there is not enough money. They're, you know, high school fourteen, it's, it's insane to have the growth in that part of the county without a high school. Our high schools and middle school are old, they've been dilapidated for ages. It also has one of the highest minorities and the highest rate of free and reduced lunch kids. So there's a poverty issue here too. But, but more than that, the, I don't think, you know, where you say, well, one project's not worthwhile. Those kids aren't worthwhile, but these other kids that were here are going to get it all generation sooner. So I, I, I really don't have much to add to what has been done, the work that's been done here. And especially after the revisions of last week, I, I can't think that anything more can be done with what these folks have to work with.
Thank you.
James?
I, I don't know if it's our place. I, I know we can make recommendations. I know we've had the opportunity in the past. So for our role for this, there's not a lot we can do in terms of like changing a project. This is more approve what it is. We could make rough recommendations. Just to make sure of the scope of.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. It's, the, the code's rather vague. It really just talks about the school district bringing the capital budget to the county council. And then one of the steps is initial review by the planning board. Because the, so, you know, I talked to Mr. Moore. And, you know, the kind of the closest interpretation is that it's a recommendation to the county council. I mean, it also could be a recommendation to the school district. But I think it's pretty open in terms of, you know, what you might want to include in that recommendation.
Okay. And then we also get another look at this at some point in the spring when it comes back to the overall county's capital budget. Because then we look at doing a pri- our recommendation for prioritization of the county's capital projects.
Right, the new, the new and substantially changed projects from last year are the ones that the planning board would prioritize.
Okay, I just, one, it's helpful for me to check myself. And I, I think it's also helpful for those that may watch and, and sometimes wish we did something more different. But I, the only thing I can think of, I would want to put a recommendation that the council explore alternative funding sources or models to address the long-term stability of the HCPSS capital infrastructure. I think, kind of rinse and repeat. I, I think we're probably at, at least one decade, if not two, past where that was really sustainable. I think we're in a substantial hole that I don't think any of us in our lifetime will, will see this county get out of. But I, I think more of the same is, is not going to do it. So I, I think that's within our ability. I don't know if anybody else feels similar. And so if so, I, I can make that motion. If not, I can just hold on to that myself.
Thank you. Kevin?
Definitely hold on to that. That was impressive. Absolutely. Recognizing from the past how this works and seeing over and over again, like you said, it's like, you know, just move things around. And every year it's somebody else moving and jockeying for a higher position on the list. At this point in time, I am, when I read through all of the information that I received, I was thinking to myself, okay, what good did we do last year when we made all the decisions that we made? And, and I don't know if we're making decisions as far as recommendations. So we put things in a higher priority and we suggest things. But overall, it seems like when it leaves here, it, it's not really considered. So that's the whole purpose for me reading information into the ledger for this particular meeting so that if and when someone on a staff someplace reviews it and says, well, why didn't you follow up on this? At least there's a record. Because otherwise, the entire thing, nobody sits here and listens to this entire thing and just says, oh, that was a nice idea. So now there's information out there. And so I took one stance that I could possibly do for a community that's asked me in the past, well, how come you guys pass that along and just, you know, swept it under the rug? So I did do something, I think, by reading that information in, and that was regarding the Faulkner Ridge Center. At this point, I truly believe that what Mr. Lubley does is a, a very amazing job of trying to appease so many individuals. But without what you just read, that little statement in there, possibly as a recommendation, I don't think we're getting anywhere. They've got to find another funding source. Absolutely. So my recommendation to add to this is if you have a dilapidated building in the city of, or in the county, if you have a dilapidated facility that's county-owned and it's boarded up and it's been boarded up for five years and it's in the heart of a community where kids are walking past it and, you know, every so often, late at night, people go in there and, you know, create havoc. That is something that the county should not be proud of. And being ranked number six as far as, you know, being a great place to live, you would think that there wouldn't be any dilapidated buildings boarded up for that many years in a community. But we have that. So that's my purpose of bringing this up is, is that something that we as a board can recommend that the council look at and possibly even the Board of Education eventually relook at what you're doing here? Because there is one item on this list that's a boarded up building. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara?
I don't think I have anything to add to those. I, I definitely agree that it would be, it would behoove us long-term to, for council, for the Board of Ed to, to try and find an alternative delivery mechanism for this kind of construction because doing it school by school in the like slow, deliberate, one at a time, everyone wants what they're going to get way is, it's not sustainable. I think that's, that's definitely accurate. But, you know, working within the framework we have, I think what we have is probably as reasonable as, as, as it's going to, as anything else would be.
Thank you. Phil, did you have a second? You look like.
Well, I, well, I mean, to what you're saying, Kevin, about, you know, a boarded up building. And my, my first thought was, and then I used to work in a company that did things. There are ways to mothball a building that, that kids can't get into the, I mean, I live in Oakland Mills. We, we know, we're not schools, but we have more than our share over the time of derelict buildings. And I was always surprised that they were allowed to have broken glass and broken light fixtures. And there's, there's a, a sort of an upkeep part of this. But, you know, going back to, if I said, well, gee, I think that neighborhood center has merit and really does have merit that you're talking about for the Faulkner Ridge site. And, you know, maybe Oakland Mills Middle School could put it off a year or two. I probably would have to park my car around the corner when I drove home tonight. Because there's, there's, not only is there a lot of energy, there's a lot of blood in that list. So, but I, I think, looking at it overall, I, I think, I think it's a shame that it, it has to be that one community suffers because another community. And it doesn't even seem like the really wealthy communities are getting all the good stuff and the other communities aren't. It, it would be nice if it was that simple and we could be, you know, irritated that way. But it's a whole long list and, and the wants are all across the board and pretty much all valid at this point. And that list will grow longer and the, and that wants will become more valid. You know, we talked about rearranging things or musical chairs. And I, I was almost earlier going to use that awful expression, arranging deck chairs on the Titanic. But, I mean, we're not there yet, but I could see that if we can't straighten out how we do it, it's basically what you're doing. And to the, to the folks that have to put this budget together, I think your admirable job, I can imagine the pressure. It must be unbelievable. I certainly have been reading and seeing videos of what's going on. Anyhow, I really couldn't make a recommendation without, if you, if you did, then all of, all the things all the way down changed. I was, I was amazed that they could even get the list together back to us in that amount of time and it was coherent in such a short amount of time because that's a big change.
Thank you. I look at it is, is, I'm not going to be an expert on the school system budget in a, in a thirty-minute presentation and, and whatever I've, I've been able to read and study. And for me, I, I remember before high school thirteen came online, Longreach Elementary School was on the list to be renovated. And then with high school thirteen, it moved out. And now it's moved out and you don't even see it on a calendar date. Now, I, I could look at my neighborhood and advocate for, for the people in my neighborhood that, that that should be a higher priority. But I don't understand state funding and priorities and all the constraints that they have of when a new school can be built and, and, and funding provided. I mean, I think the state is pretty much has the position of you only get money for a new school after you need it, not beforehand. Which, probably not the best way to do things, but you can make your own argument. But it, it's a long way, I, I don't feel comfortable with making any adjustments for those reasons. I, I, I mean, there's, there's political, there's technical and, and other considerations that went into this that I believe is the compromise of whatever they feel is best for right now at, at the moment. We, I would recommend that we make a recommendation to approve to the county council with two additional notes. One is they look, they, they recognize that Faulkner Ridge is currently abandoned and they should investigate either alternate uses or securing it to prevent further, further damage. And the other one is, is with the budget situation, the way they are, they should, they should consider studying alternate funding resources. So we'd be a recommendation with those two notes and, and.
I'd be happy to make, make that motion if we need a motion for that.
Say so moved.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Was that clear? You, you'll be able to pull that out of the notes and, for the.
The wisdom of Solomon.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's, it's all on the recording.
Yeah, but I'm not going to go back and listen to it.
We'll definitely have to listen to it before it gets written.
The best of Ed Coleman.
Well, I can't say things twice the same way, so it's.
We're still live.
The, can we take five minutes?